It's 5:30 August 17th. Welcome to the Sun Prairie Committee of the Whole Meeting. I would also like to say happy birthday to our clerk. We would sing happy birthday to you, but I think we would lose our vast listening audience, so. So anyway, Alenda, would you please take the role?
Sure. Alder Bowling?
Here.
Crombie?
Here.
Jacobs?
Yep.
Yocish?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Polansky?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Stocker?
Here.
And we have Quorum.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from August 3rd. Does anyone?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moving second. Any changes, additions, deletions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimous. Council Liaison Committee Member Reports. Or, I'm sorry, let's back up. Don, is there anybody from the vast listening? Okay. Council Liaison Committee Member Reports. Anything to report? Is that your hand up, Alder Bowling? We can, or is? Okay.
I was fixing my laptop.
Alder Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. And the Library Board voted last week to go back to virtual meetings through the end of the year, so to join those meetings, it will be via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Ahead of the order that just came out for?
Yes.
That we'll be discussing. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have two items. One is the, again, the continuing discussion of the '22 to 2031 CIP, and then also a discussion, possible action in the hybrid virtual meetings. If it's okay with this council, since we have a packed agenda tonight, I would like to move this to the end and see if we have time at the end. And then at the end, discuss whether we want to, if we don't have time, come back after council to discuss these items. But there's items on this agenda that have to go to council tonight that are further down under new business, so does anyone have any objections to that? Okay. Thank you. First item of new business, consideration discussion of possible action regarding financial assistance request from Sunshine Place. Is that Kristen?
Good evening, thank you. City staff received a request from Sunshine Place for some assistance with their rent and utility program that they, the assistance program that they provide for our community members. If you recall, back in 2020, the city did allocate some funds to the Sunshine Place for this purpose, and their funds from the city remaining at the current moment is $2,148. Unfortunately, the demand is higher than the balance in that account, and they're hoping that the city would contribute $21,000 to help bridge the gap until the Dane County program starts to assist with housing. That's about six weeks from now. They're hoping to start at the beginning of October. At the same time, staff did explore looking at using ARPA funds to assist the Sunshine Place with this request, but it was determined at that, during that time, that to be compliant with ARPA regulations, there was a significant amount of documentation that the Sunshine Place would need to require in request of the applicants that take a significant amount of time to get, which would delay funding passed until past October. So staff is recommending using fund balance to assist the Sunshine Place with their $21,000
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to this?
And we do have Ann from the Sunshine Place here also, it looks like.
Oh, good afternoon, Ann.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity and for taking our request.
Hi, Ann, this is Mike Jacobs. How are you today?
Hi, Mike. I'm good, thank you.
Just a couple of questions I want to start off with. My first question is, so this documentation question is, so I fancy myself as someone who's generous in this respect, but I'm also someone who fancies myself as very diligent about making sure that this money's not ill-spent, so that no one ever questions the decisions this body makes in the future. So can you tell me about why there's a burden regarding documentation and how we might overcome this?
Yes, well, I'm not sure if we can overcome it, Mike, but I looked into the ARPA rules, and so currently what we require of our, of the people that are requesting help with their rent or utility assistance, we try to make sure we have proper documentation, but not create any undue barriers for them. The ARPA funding, not that it creates more barriers, but they require a lot more documentation. For example, we don't require a copy of the lease. We get certification from every landlord, and we get their W-9, and we match up license and addresses and things like that. So we do our due diligence. We feel very confident in our due diligence. ARPA and the federal government is requiring not only the lease, but six months, going back six months, in rent and income verification and verification of the applicant themselves. And so there's a couple different barriers for Sunshine Place to implement this. One, it'll take us some time to sort through it and figure out what all the documentation is that we need, so that we know that we're compliant. And I'm sure that folks in the city who have to collect documentation for anything can appreciate the amount of time it takes just to figure out your system. So we recognize that for one, and two, we know from our own experience, from even just asking for limited information from our families requesting help, that it can take a week, 10 days sometimes, to get it from the client and then from the landlord, and there's a lot of iterations sometimes and missing things. And so that would also take substantially a lot more time because of the amount of information that they're requiring for us to get from the families. So those two things, coupled with the fact that we would only be running this program for ARPA funding for less than seven weeks, probably six weeks. It doesn't seem like a good use of our limited staff time, and I'm not even sure how many, you know, we're requesting $21,000. I'm not even sure we could disperse $21,000 and fill this gap that we see that we're going to have. Yeah, so that's basically, I think that answers your question, Mike. I hope it does.
It does, but not satisfactorily, to be honest. But it's a small enough amount of money that I'm comfortable with it. In fact, you may not know this, we just received some good news regarding having a windfall that we didn't expect regarding money coming in here. So not only would, I would like to make a motion for $30,000. Let's give more, so we don't have this question again, and I trust that the Sunshine Place will spend this money in a good way. So I would like to make a motion for $30,000.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any other questions? Alder Crombie?
I am in support of this, but like we do for other organizations that come forward with it when we give them money, I'd like to have a report at the end of like October, November, to see what, how the money was spent, and so I'd like to have a report.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alder Jacobs, you actually asked the question I had planned to ask, and then I had a secondary follow-up to that question, and that is, if we're not, if the documentation for ARPA was too much of a burden, as stewards of our taxpayer money, how can we assure our taxpayers that, if you want to call it controls or whatever, certain parameters are in effect so that these funds aren't used improperly? Because again, our taxpayers are struggling through this also.
Yes. Well, one, we keep extraordinary documentation of every, I can tell you where every dollar went from the past distributions that you supported us with, and not that I would want to give you names, but we could share, you know, how many fam, well, I have the numbers of families, but we feel very strongly that we have to be good stewards of all the money that is donated to Sunshine Place. So particularly in this program where we're dealing with federal and other funding, city funding, grant funding, is what has supported this rent and utility assistance program since the beginning. So from the get-go, we have been very diligent in our reporting. And so to speak to Marine's request, yes, we can do that at any request, at any time. I can get you exactly where the funding has gone, and that will continue. I can give you it for the funding that we received earlier as well. As far as documentation, we're very strict on what is required from everybody and landlords, and we work to get that too.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Question for Kristen. I know you had in the documentation that this would get us closer to an advantage for next year. This $30,000 now won't put us over the top, will it?
It will not. We have about a $68,000 gap in our expenditure, where we're currently at, in our expenditure restraint ceiling, so this would just help us get closer to that ceiling.
Yeah, I didn't know if anything came out since that documentation that would have, now that we agreed to this, and now all of a sudden we're in the opposite direction. Okay, Alder Yocish?
I guess I would recommend that we go with the $21,000 until the Dane County program starts up in October. That was the recommendation that was put before us, and I understand this is a substantial program at Dane County that's going to be starting up. Is that right, Erin?
Yeah, that's correct. Our understanding is in October, Dane County has sufficient resources to cover both back rent and forward-looking, looking at rent in the future to assist families, so.
So is that an amendment, then, that you're making?
No, I'm just making a comment.
Okay. Okay. Alder Crombie?
Alder Bowling, raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't. Okay, Alder Bowling, please.
Thank you. One of the things that, when I was listening, I was thinking about how there's quite a few barriers in regards to accessing the funding that we were just talking about. I'm wondering in regards to, this is just a comment, not so much is when we get into the process for the Dane County, and wondering how the intersection of Sunshine Place, if there is an eye towards creating an ease of being able to apply for those funds, and just making it as easy as possible on the end user, so that way, you know, it's already going to be difficult to have all that documentation you talked about, and if that's going to be part of the criteria for the Dane County funding program, I'm just wondering, from the Sunshine Place perspective, do you have like a portal or something that you're working, that people can just easily access? Any efforts or talks about that?
No, you know, Janelle with Joining Forces for Families, she does the intake for our rent and utility assistance program, so we do work in tandem, and she does guide them. She'll do the referral to the county program when people call in, starting October 1st, or whenever they open it up. And that's certainly something we could look into. I know some other places, I think Shelter From the Storm did have a service when, maybe when the Tenant Resource Center started up with the core funding, and I don't know if they had many people come in to receive help, but that'd certainly be something that I could visit with Shelter From the Storm, to see if there's some ways we can maybe collaborate together to help take down those barriers. And, you know, we, with this rent and utility assistance program, we, and learning now that the county wants to essentially not have us help with rent and utility, starting when they take over the program, we still think there's going to be immediate needs, which is why I was appreciating Mike's recommendation for the $30,000, because we do anticipate there's going to be other immediate needs that people cannot access with the rent and utility assistance. We, I can't speak to that right now, but in the next couple of weeks, our team is getting together to define how we're going to work moving forward with our assistance program, because we do get, you know, people, their cars break down and they can't get to work. They had, you know, somebody came and they couldn't pay to go to the DMV or, you know, get their license, and so there's things like that, that we can do, help people in other ways that are also creating issues for them in their lives, so. But regardless, that's where we're at.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for the work that you all are doing. We're still in a pandemic. People were in need beforehand, and it's just been hard, so thank you.
For sure, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alenda, please take the role.
Okay, aye. Wait, are we doing the role on the 30?
Yes.
This is, yes, I'm sorry. It is on the $30,000, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yocish?
No.
McElroy?
No.
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that is 5:30. This is a budget item, but that's only at council, correct?
That is correct, so the council can decide how it would like to proceed, but right now, it would not pass, so, at the council level.
But it goes on to the council for action.
It does go on to the council.
Moves forward.
Correct. This is a recommendation to the council.
This is Sunshine Place. This is the one place we're funding that touches the lives of people in this community. If our issue is $21,000 versus 30, then let's address that. But it is an "and" in this organization that's the problem. The money, they need the money. We can do it. We've got the money.
Alder McElroy?
Thank you.
Thank you. If we had voted to give them the $21,000, I would have absolutely stepped up and said yes. The fact that they asked for $21,000 and we offered 30, I personally cannot support that. If they had asked for $30,000, I would have said yes, but they had not planned on $30,000. They had planned on 21. Thank you.
At this point, can we make a motion?
Well, let's let it go to council, and we'll deal with it on council, and I'll assure you that we'll have the question raised, whether somebody makes a motion to change it or not. But we've only got an hour and a half. We've got two huge issues we've got to talk about. We spent 20 minutes on an issue that is nothing.
Right.
How can we not fund Sunshine Place? If the number is $21,000, then do a budget amendment, or do an amendment to the motion, and get on with it. But we've wasted 20 minutes on something we have got to stand with that organization. They're the only ones we put money into that are touching people's lives. We've got to do that. Not that I feel strongly about that.
How do you really feel?
Yeah. Let's get on to those big issues that are cumbersome to deal with.
Thank you. We're going to move on. We have the Colonial Club presentation up next, and I saw Gail on. I'm not sure if Bob is on. There's Bob. And there's Gail. Okay, good afternoon, Colonial Club. Thank you for joining us. Who's going to start out, Bob or Gail?
I will. So this sort of ended up being, what I understand, is a request for an update. I think Alder Crombie wanted on what the Colonial Club's been doing, and then it also turned into our request for 2022. So if I skip anything or leave stuff out, just let me know, because we're kind of doing a couple of things here. But as you know, we, the Colonial Club, closed to the general public back on March 16th of 2020, although all of our services continued. We just had to do them in a different manner. Our onsite home, our onsite noon meals, that closed, and we moved all those people to home meal delivery. You know, our adult day center, several people opted out, but several people desperately needed the service. Our case management went crazy with needs and requests for support, as did the whole in general meal program. So it's been, it's been an interesting year, to say the least, and we've tried to adjust as the pandemic evolved, and between March and May, things got even a little more intense, and we had to, you know, even scale down how we were delivering the meals. Instead of a daily delivery, we were only doing two times a week. Monday, they would get a meal for Monday and Tuesday, and on Wednesday, they'd get a meal for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, which we could not have done without the support of Sunshine Place and the Sunshine Food Pantry, who helped with a huge influx of food and to get to our clients. So I would look at the last year and say, gosh, it was intense, like, for everybody. It was overwhelming. I don't know if that was for everybody. It was certainly overwhelming for the Colonial Club. In addition to having to scale back on how we delivered the programs, that meant scaling back on our volunteers. And while we still used volunteers in the summertime to deliver those two days or three days' worth of meals last summer, and a couple of you know about that, Mike, Terry, thank We couldn't have volunteers in the kitchen helping Jean try to get these meals out, and, you know, we couldn't have the volunteers in the adult day center helping out anymore. We couldn't have the volunteers in the main office anymore. So it just, you know, and I think Ann, if she's still on, could tell you, it just really challenged us in ways we would have never thought of. In 2013, for the first time in our, in our now 50-year history, the Colonial Club became an accredited senior center through the state of Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And one of those things that we were required to do in that was to, you know, submit our emergency planning documentation. And as much as we thought we were ahead of a game on that, raise your hand if you picked pandemic in your emergency planning. Not us. We didn't. So we continued to learn, and we were able to get through the year, not only because of the City of Sun Prairie's additional support, but every other community that we asked funds from, which would be Marshall, Bris, Burke, Cottage Grove, and Medina, joined the City of Sun Prairie with additional funding for 2020. The only community that couldn't do that was the town of Bristol, and they gave us the same amount of funding from 2019 into 2020. So I want to emphasize to you that we didn't look to the City of Sun Prairie as our only resource. We had multiple resources, and beyond that, beyond those communities, we, as I indicated in my narrative in our request for '22 funding, had a successful joint collaboration with Sunshine Place, the Sun Prairie Food Pantry for the Boys and Girls Club and the United Way Grant. We, on our own, independently, went after funding from the Otto Bremer Foundation out of Minneapolis, the Green Bay Packer Foundation, and then the Dane County Area Agency on Aging came through for us with additional funding to continue with our kitchen equipment replacement project that we had started on. So we, yeah, you know, we all scrambled. I know we all did. And I, you know, we tried, as soon as it was feasibly humanly possible, to start doing as much as we could with our clientele. And by summer, we started doing appointments. So you could come in and use the exercise room one at a time. You could come in and use the computer lab one at a time. You could come in and use the woodshop one at the time. As Gail will tell you in a few minutes, you know, appointments with case managers could happen. If it was feasible, they met via Zoom, like we're doing. But unfortunately, a lot of our constituents aren't able to access that kind of technology. So we were still doing face-to-face meetings that we created and made more safer by our own ingenuity, if you will, with, you know, creating Plexiglas barriers and actually big plastic sheets over rods that we kind of cobbled together. And, you know, the good news, I mean, if I can think about any good news over the past year, you know, as we got through, we continued to provide services, and we didn't have any major outbreak, you know? The day center continued to operate. We, you know, enforced the rules. They wore masks. Family members didn't even come in to the day center. Gail and myself and other staff members who don't work in the day center would not go in the day center unless it was an emergency. And we had no outbreaks. So we feel like we did, I feel like we did a really good job in sustaining our programming, staving off any major outbreak of COVID, and, you know, ending the year in a financial situation, that was okay, you know? All things considered, our, with all those extra grants, with our donor support, we were able to end the year in a good place. So we're grateful, and I'm sure you probably have more questions to ask, and so I'll just be quiet for a little bit, and I'll let Gail, I asked Gail to join us, so she could kind of talk specifically about some of the emerging trends that they've been seeing in case management, what the year was like for case managers, because that's kind of our doorway to all of our services. You know, when people get discharged from the hospital, they call on the case management, which then opens the door to supportive home care, to the adult daycare, to the meals, to transportation, all of that stuff. So I'll be quiet for a while and turn it over to Gail.
Sorry about that. I just realized I had to unmute myself. Yeah, so my name is Gail Brooks. I'm the case management coordinator here at the Colonial Club. The PIP The picture that you saw temporarily earlier, I can't get her off of the screen, so that was not me. This is me. But anyway, so, you know, I, I thought it would be good, just really quick here, because I know it is time sensitive, but to even given a quick overview of, you know, what is case management? I mean, what do we do here? And so really, our goal in case management is to provide our senior adults the support and resources and community services they need to remain safe and independent in their homes. That's the primary goal of that, this program. And so, you know, that is often done by home visits to do, to conduct a home visit and assessment. And of course, during the pandemic, in which has continued on a little bit here, that was, that was something that was not, that was very difficult to do. We were not able to do a lot of the home visits during the, the height of the pandemic. So having to go into other modes, like on the phone and as Bob had shared, Zoom, and in critical situations, trying to have them, if they felt comfortable, to come into the senior center so that we could address the concerns and needs that they have. And so, you know, we're helping folks with, with things that, of course, are important. I mean, how do you access food during a time like this? How do you get groceries? Prescriptions, healthcare coverage, financial and utility assistance programs. You know, we've worked a lot, even in this time, with caregiver situations where there was a need for respite care. So one of the caregivers, you know, could go to work and still have that ability to work and be able to get supportive services for the caregiver. Everything from that to, you know, we, it, things didn't stop. I mean, we kept doing what we've been doing for many years. And that includes things like even working in situation with elder abuse and neglect situations. And, but again, a very challenging, it, it truly was and continues to be actually a, a challenging time for case management. You know, we, we get referrals from hospital and nursing home discharge planners and home health agencies and family and friends, and we've been working with, you know, Sun Prairie Police and EMS and Fire Department, you know, and again, you know, adult protective services, we have been involved with them. We continue to be with, involved with them with some tenuous client situations. And then, of course, there is the individual that will call in and, and request help. So that's kind of a general, and, and even I should say this too, because we do have other service areas too. There's been, there was definitely an increase in referrals from the Dane County Sheriff's Department. So for, for a variety of reasons, for frailty that they were seeing in the home. So that's kind of just a quick down and dirty about what, what we do in case management. Some of the trends that we continue to see and that we're seeing this year is that we're, we are serving more senior adults this year at this point than we were even last year at the height of the pandemic. And it's important to know that during that time, when we're talking about setting up meals for our folks to be able to get those into their home, that includes the nutrition department, but it also very much includes case management. We have requirements to do assessments for, to make sure that the people are still eligible and all those kinds of things. And so we were very much a part of that on that level as well. And that was one of the, the bigger challenges that we had here at the Colonial Club for a while. We, we got her down to a science, though. I, I have to tell you, I'm very proud of how we did end up handling all of that. But it, it was definitely, definitely a challenge and the case management was certainly a part of that. So, you know, we've been trying to figure out why this increased. Why is it still increasing? It's, you know? And, you know, one of the things that we're finding out is, and I shouldn't be surprised by this, but when you can't do in-home visits, when you can't meet with them in their home, in their environment, the, the senior adults, you know, you can try all that you can to ask the right questions on the phone to try to, you know, assess the situation and kind of come up with what their concerns are and really get a sense of what the environment is, but it's quite difficult. So we're seeing that, you know, even on our part, we've been, we have just started doing home visits again. Last like month and a half or two months ago, we'll have to keep reevaluating that again, evaluating that. But anyway, so we're seeing that, you know, when we are doing the home visits, we're seeing a different picture. And I guess I'm not surprised by that, but that we're seeing increased frailty. And families are starting to come, have been starting to come together and friends, and they're seeing increased frailty from what they really couldn't see, from what they got over video or on the phone, that's, that sort of thing. So, you know, we also know that more folks have started going to the clinic. And so, again, another sign of seeing some of that change and that, that increase in the frailty for them. So, you know, I just lost my, so we're also, so that was one of, that's one of the big things. Again, we are definitely serving more people at the same time this year than we were last year, which is kind of surprising to me to a degree. But I think it is part of it because of that. And, you know, the other part is, you know, we do have an aging population and it's happening. So we are definitely serving more people as a result of that. Some of the other bigger trends that we are seeing is an increase in referrals, actually for our younger senior adults that are like in the age group of 60 to 65, where we're really seeing a lot more even complex needs and situations that includes sometimes the mental health component, insufficient healthcare coverage, and limited with no, you know, very little personal support and stuff. So those tend to get more complex. You know, again, seeing an increase in, one of the other ones that we have that is, it is a constant for us is trying, is we get referrals about housing, needing to find housing because of, you know, fixed incomes, rental rates keep going up, the income doesn't go up, and being actually, you know, kind of priced out of where they, they live and really wanting to desire to stay in their community of choice. The struggle that we have is that really the price range that we need to see apartments for most of our clients is between that $400 to $600 realm subsidized, in that realm of, you know, Section 8 housing as an example, more subsidized housing. Because we truly are having people, senior adults that have been in Sun Prairie here, having to leave this community because they cannot find affordable housing. And when I say affordable, I'm talking about in more in that range so that they can remain here in Sun Prairie. And that is something that we, we have constant referrals for housing. And so, you know, there's long waiting lists for subsidized housing. Yeah. And so that's another thing that we can, we consistently see. We are having, of course, I mean, I don't think this is a surprise, but there is an increase in mental health component as it relates to social isolation and anxiety. And it's not just about the COVID, the pandemic, pandemic situation. There have been so many layers with news, you know, world events and all this kind of stuff in it. For the older adult that doesn't have a lot of outside connection, sometimes this is just laying heavy on them. So we have been working very hard at looking at ways to try to reduce social isolation and, and those types of things for folks, phone calls, some of them do have the technology. So we're trying to keep in touch that way. Yeah. And Dane County, the area agency on aging has done an amazing job with providing us with resources too, to provide to folks and, and also the Colonial Club through the Home Deliverer Meal Program, did a lot of things that way to, to provide people for activity and those types of things. And then I guess the, the other thing I was going to say is Bob had mentioned that a lot of our senior adults are limited in the technology side of things. We have recently done, have an increase in helping those seniors that have some of that technology already or wanting technology and helping to apply for the emergency broadband benefit. So that is allowing people to actually afford to have internet and with Wi-Fi access. And so that's been our latest thing that we've been working on and have an increase in, in trying to, to have more of our senior adults have that capacity to do so. You know, as far as our challenges, again, I talked about one of the big ones, which is, you know, the challenge to do the home visit and, and the different perspective that comes there. And another thing is, most recently for us, again, what's happening is because there is a lack of employees or of workers, we are having a difficult time actually finding organizations that can provide in-home care for a number of our clients. That's because they are experiencing a shortage of employees. And so that is, that is something that is a huge concern because that, that extra support of providing, you know, cleaning, personal care assistance, running errands, those types of things are some of the key things that we can use and the senior can utilize to stay safe and independent in that home. And it's getting more difficult and more challenging to, to actually get that in place. And so, and, and then another thing, and I'm just breezing through this because I know the time is sensitive here, but another thing for us is in case management, a whirlwind of information about the changes in the benefit programs like food share and healthcare and, oh, it just so much that's been happening in, in that world. Because that's what we help out with. We help out with the benefit side of things and getting people with food, that food share and utility assistance and medications that reduce costs and stuff. That information was, has been nonstop as far as the wealth of it that's out there and keeping up with that. And it's a challenge. Again, I want to give kudos out though to, particularly to Dane County Area Agency on Aging and some of the other senior advocacy organizations. They have kept us up to date on so much of what are some other options that we can help our folks with rent assistance and all kinds of things. So, yeah, and I guess just to put this out there, that if you have a referral to make to case management, you can simply call the main number for the Colonial Club and ask for the case management intake specialist. And then they will go ahead with that process and start, start that referral process. We have been recently, up to two weeks for getting back to folks, came very close to starting a waiting list, but I think we've kind of got things kind of backed off again a little bit. But we have been venturing very close to waiting list and we're trying to, you know, not have that. But it kind of gives you a sense of what, it's been pretty crazy.
So before you begin your questions, she said a few things that I want to touch on. One was during the course of the year of the pandemic, when we had to cut back like on our in-home visits through the supportive home care and our numbers went down in the Adult Day Center. In order to keep our staff members at full, their regular hours, we gave several of them new responsibilities, which included, everybody got contacted every week, everybody on our list. So we had staff members calling them at home. Are you okay? Do you need anything? How's it going? And the staff members that were doing that, you know, a few weeks into it, we're like, oh my gosh, these calls are taking a half hour, 45 minutes now because they, they know who we are, they know why we're calling, and they need to talk. You know, it might have been about what was happening on the young and the restless that day, but it, it was important. The other thing she mentioned, of course, was that employee shortage thing. We can all feel that pain. That includes our own supportive home care service that we do. We don't have the people. We can't hire enough staff. We, you know, we've had ads out for months and nothing on that. So we're trying to figure it out. And the other thing about housing, and I think Alder Crombie might join in on this, I would bet if Colonial View would build two more buildings of the size they are now, okay, three, we could fill in by the end of the month.
And I have a waiting list for that.
There you go. Okay, we'll shut up now.
Okay. Thank you, Bob and Gail. Are there any questions anyone has? Alder Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Gail, for presenting and giving us a whirlwind tour through case management. I was looking for more annual report styled numbers tonight. Obviously, we don't have a whole lot more time for this meeting.
I sent those. I sent them to Mr. Oppenheimer and Mr. Stocker.
Yeah, I can, I can forward those on.
Okay, that would be lovely. That was what I was expecting for the presentation. So just a run through of those to understand, you know, numbers of people you've helped in the last year. And, you know, I know you do a lot of meals, a lot of outreach, a lot of assisting those who need to get to medical appointments. Curious to know how the pandemic has really impacted that and knowing that there's always a need, but the need is growing as well. So that was what I was looking for.
You know, if you want, Alder Stevens, I can give you the quick rundown.
I think we need to actually move on. We have several closed session items that we still need to get to, but I'll, I'll get together with Alder Stocker and get all of that information you sent. So thank you.
Any other questions? Alder McElroy?
Thank you. Bob, I really don't have a question. I just want to tell you how much your service means to the seniors in Sun Prairie. As a deliverer of Meals on Wheels, I know how much that contact and sense of belonging means to our seniors. Thank you, Anne Gail, for all you do and your entire staff.
Thank you for helping.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alder Crombie?
I have one.
Alder Bowling has one. I was just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget.
We're totally going to get used to this.
Yeah, okay. Alder Bowling.
So I just want to ask a question. It's, it's in tandem with Alder McElroy. The question I have is how are you all doing as a staff? I'm in HR. So that's the first question I asked. It was like, are you hanging in there or how's your staff doing that you do currently have on?
I, I certainly won't lie. It has been a struggle. And we have had just one, maybe two people that have left on their own accord in the past year. I can't attribute it to COVID completely, but it has been taxing to be sure. We have tried to do, you know, all the things that, you know, an HR person would want us to do about supporting staff throughout the, as I mentioned, which you'll see in the information I sent with the numbers, we did apply for PPP money and some of, and we were approved. And some of that money we could use for hazard pay, and we did that. So we did, you know, offer additional money in their paycheck, additional stipends at last fall, early winter, to show the appreciation for what they've been doing and what they've been going through.
Thank you. And thanks the whole team for everything that you all are doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I just want to also thank Bob Power, Gail Brooks for being on tonight. And thank you for all you do, not only for what you do, but how you do it and the passion that you put before. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on. We're going to go into closed session now. And we're going to go into closed session for three items. The following three items are, we are going to adjourn into closed, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding option to purchase land in Sun Prairie Business Park. We are also going to, in that closed session, adjourn, again, according to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.851C, to consider employment and performance evaluation data with respect to the city attorney and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851F for preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges of any public employee over which the governmental body or the investigation of charges of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility. The last item that we're going into closed session for is again, Wisconsin State Statute 19.851G to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy to be adopted in response to the notice of claims filed by Steve's, Steve's Wholesale LLC, Waiooga Cheese LLC, and Steve Canous. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll move to go into closed session.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Alena, would you please take the role?
Bowling.
Aye.
Crombie.
Aye.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Yokus.
Aye.
McElroy.
Aye.
Polensky.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stocker.
Aye. Done. Would you please tell us when we're
Let us know when we're back.
Broadcast is ready.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks on work item, Mark.
Yeah, we're working.
While we're doing that, I don't see the item on the council agenda, so it didn't make it over there, I don't think.
Recording in progress.
So we might have to vote on it now.
Well, let's vote and close at least get the voting.
Yep. Yep. So we can do the vote in committee of the whole for the denial of the claim.
Okay. Okay, so we are back in open session, and we will be taking action on item E, which was to discuss the -- or create the response to the notice of claims filed by Steve's Wholesale LLC, Why We Get Cheese LLC, and Steve Canous. We would be taking action on that item.
I will make a motion to deny the claim.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a move and our motion and a second to deny the claim by Steve's Wholesale LLC, Why We Get Cheese LLC, and Steve Canous. Elena, would you please take the role?
Bowling.
Aye.
Crombie.
Aye.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Yocish.
Aye.
McAvoy.
Aye.
Polansky.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stackard.
Aye. Okay, thank you, that was unanimous. Report of the council president, due to the timing, the only item I'm going to report on is Thursday. If you're available and able, assemble for the annual Corn Fest parade, begins at 6:00. And so next is the report of the city administrator.
The only thing, I'll quickly report, Mr. President, is that public health issued a new order requiring face coverings indoors. It goes into effect on Thursday, 8/19, and runs through September 16th. That information has been sent out to city employees, and we have followed up the guidance of Madison Public Health from the beginning of the pandemic, so we'll be following that order as provided by Madison Public Health.
Okay, so thank you very much for that report. Before we move on to referrals, under the two items of unfinished business, would you prefer to come back after council or defer these until the next meeting?
Let's defer to the next meeting.
Okay, so would we need a table, to table those items, or would it automatically defer to a table, I think, right?
We'll just defer them, Mr. President, without action.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be referrals. Any referrals? Okay, seen none. Motion to adjourn, please.
All moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. We will see you in a few minutes for council.